Okay, seeing that everybody's here, we'll open the meeting of the Halifax Planning Board for September 5th, 2024, taking place 7:00 PM in Selecton's meeting room. Let everyone know that the meeting is being recorded by Area 58. We can review on E2. President, tonight's meeting is from Nellit, Amy Trup, Ron McKenna, Tom Millius, and Rick Merritt. Okay, I'll accept the motion to accept the agenda as printed.
So moved.
And a second? And we'll motion in a second to accept the agenda for September 5th, 2024. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Pass as unanimous. Okay, let's start off, just so we know, the appointment 24 SPR 244 Arnold Ware has been continued for 395 Plymouth Street, map 73 lot 7A. So evidently, we'll put them on for the next meeting. They called up and asked for a continuance. So I guess as a board, their time limit is up.
September 9th.
September 9th. So if nobody's here from Ware, why don't we as a board at least make a motion or accept a motion to give them an extension? And if they don't want it, since there's nobody here to accept it, at least it would be available for them. We can send them off an extension letter and take it from there. We hadn't heard from them. So what are we looking at?
We have, if we give them an extension for 30 days, we'll have two meetings and it'll go to October 9th. If we give them an extension for 45, it goes to October 24th. And if we give them a 60, it goes to November 8th.
I don't see going past the 9th.
Give them two meetings.
And if he's gonna do it.
Then he'll, yeah, he'll sign it if he wants it.
Right.
Okay.
Or he certainly has an option to withdraw.
Okay.
If the case may.
Okay, I'll make a motion to extend the 24 SPR 244 for Arnold Ware site plan application for 30 days with the condition that he accepts it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second to extend the 30-day extension to the Ware application.
October 9th.
To October 9th. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Pass as unanimous. You do have a form here.
I'm gonna finish one.
Can I ask a question?
Certainly.
Is there any site review or any...
Your name and address.
John Shay, 530 Thompson Street.
Yes, sir.
Is there any site plan or anything that I could review? Or someone in the Historical District Commission in this particular situation is in the Historical District, so we need to address it.
That was one of the things that we required him to do was approach the story.
Approaching it, okay.
They did submit a site plan with a drawing of real site. I think it was last thing, it was a pre-meeting, so maybe...
I think it was August first.
They made an appointment and I understand they have not at this point.
Has been no communication out? I'm sure that's available for you to look at. I don't know if we have it up here in the office.
We do have one up here, if you want to see it.
He's not coming back till the 9th, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I just figured get it done.
Okay. Well, actually, he's gonna come back on the 9th.
Right. And Joan, how often do they need... Yeah. Oh, there's no set...
No set time.
I think that's what we opened, the contact.
Yeah, contact. We need on Tuesday, at the museum.
Yes, we mentioned they will meet with you and find out, get a date in your office at the mountain.
Yeah. Come down. It'll still...
You know who the boss is, don't you?
Here's a list of dates.
If I remember correctly, did they finally put a sketch on this one?
Yes, there was.
I don't know if it was on there or was it a separate sheet?
It might have been a separate sheet, but he did bring them in at one time, whether it's included or not.
You also need a picture of the building that's proposed.
Well, that's what I'm wondering.
Not just a sketch of the building, it has to be...
All written.
Like across from Davis Garage, they came in with the whole plan and the whole building.
Yeah, that's why we told him that he had to go there. Without, and we wouldn't do anything until he said that.
He might not have submitted, but he did come in.
Yeah, the site plan doesn't show any picture of the building.
Yeah, that's...
No, they did have something separate. Yeah. I'm sure I get it.
So I just don't actually know what to do.
I have a question. So conditional on his acceptance of it. So that would mean that if he doesn't accept the extension, right?
It means we'll withdraw, right? Wouldn't that mean his withdrawing?
Well, yeah, so we would have to withdraw it without prejudice, but we should make that...
But we have to be careful we don't give him constructive...
That's exactly what I'm talking about. All of a sudden, I'm just thinking...
If he doesn't accept the extension, we'd have to call a meeting to deny it.
Okay, so I think we should add another motion that if he doesn't accept this by the 9th, then we should vote right now to...
When's the deadline? When's his...
The 9th.
The 9th is his last day?
Yeah. So if we give him this extension and he doesn't accept it...
Maybe we change the motion to extend it to the 9th, subject to his signing, or deemed denied.
But we'd have to vote on that, so, okay. So do I make another motion where we already accepted this? We already did this motion, but we have to...
We can amend it.
Okay.
We have to vote. We gotta vote to amend it.
Can I, I would like to vote to amend the motion that we just voted on.
Do I have a second to allow the motion to amend?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion in a second to amend the previous vote. Yes, Amy, if you could explain it.
Okay. The reasoning being that they would receive constructive approval by September 9th if they decided not to accept the...
30-day extension.
Yes, exactly.
Then you wouldn't need it anytime soon.
Correct. So should we vote on the amendment?
Yes.
Okay, so make a motion, do we have... Okay, so, but we didn't...
Motion on the floor right now.
Okay, so do we, we have to vote to amend it? So all those in favor, you would have to do.
Yeah, we need to vote to amend it.
Yeah.
Right, that's what's on the floor right now.
Okay.
Do you amend it?
Not what she's gonna do, but that we vote to allow us to amend it.
Yeah, we had a motion in a second, but we didn't aye it.
Yeah.
That's correct, there's no vote on it. She was gonna explain it first. All right, I'll ask for a voice vote. Brendan?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Myself, yes.
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
You're unanimous.
Okay. All right, I'll make a motion to offer 24 SPR 244 site plan for Ware at, what's the address? 395 Plymouth Street to allow them a continuance if they so choose, sign it by September 9th for a 30-day extension, or I move, or we, I make part of this, or the condition that this board will either accept a withdrawal by the 9th, or it will be a denial of the site plan. Wordy, but never had to do that one before.
Yeah.
Okay, this motion on the floor, do I have a second?
I'll set this.
There's a motion in a second. All those in favor, the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Pass as unanimous.
Okay. Conditional on execution.
Just gotta explain the motion to...
Close.
I was gonna second it just to not have to repeat it.
Yeah.
Conditional on execution of continuing.
Town Hall's closed tomorrow, so it's basically...
Executing...
Tuesday.
The 9th is Monday.
Monday, yeah.
Monday.
24. Or withdrawal without prejudice. Or the site plan is denied. By a 5-0 vote. All right, somebody wanna check me on this, please?
30 days is just... Is today's date on this, yesterday's? Nope.
Well...
September 5th, wherever it is. So it's... Yeah.
Right. I can add next to the 30 days that it would be October 9th if they so chose to take it. I couldn't see that they're not gonna take it.
Right.
Do you know?
These problematic forms. Yeah, it's denied. We'd wanna slide on it before, too.
So should I put October 9th?
Sure.
Everybody's agreed that I can put that there?
I mean, you can come down with something.
Right, exactly.
I know, I was even thinking that, too.
Put so much work and stuff into it. And if we deny it, it's two years, yes, we just give them an opportunity.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I'll go put this on the file.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, that's the first one. Let's move on to a second appointment. New marriage for 285 Holm Street, PSPR 24-1, site plan review application. Somebody here to speak on that?
Mr. Chair, I get recused from this.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yes.
Just noting along that Mr. Merritt has recused himself from being...
At 7:24.
Yes.
Good evening, my name is Ansel Velazquez. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. With me is Jim Pavlik, our engineer. So this is an application to change the use of the property. We are also proposing to install a stormwater management system on the site. There is no proposed additional construction to the building or other construction on the property. The only work that is proposed is the installation of the stormwater management system itself. And then once that has been installed, we're looking at some parking spaces. The building itself is not scheduled to change in any way. We've applied with the Conservation Commission for approval for the stormwater management system. Their review engineer is reviewing our design. We don't have a hearing date from them yet, but I anticipate that we will get one relatively soon. We just don't have it yet. I'll speak a bit about the proposed use. So the current use that is allowed on the site under the existing site plan approval is a storage use without employees on the property. This site is zoned industrial. It is in the industrial zone. It is not a residentially zoned property, it's industrial. What is proposed is a light manufacturing use allowed under the zoning bylaw. This is the manufacture and assembly of signs and traffic control devices and other similar things. It is not manufacturing where you take raw materials and you have large pieces of equipment and you machine things or you create things. Component parts come in and they are connected. It is like tinker toys, or those pipe toys that fit together. Component part A fits into component part B with a component part C. It's just assembly. There would be some welding from time to time, but that's not a considerable part of the scope of work here. It's proposed that, our tenant has said that he's gonna have one employee, right? He wants to expand the business. If he gets site plan review and can commence the business, he would want to expand. But it's never gonna be more than two employees of the site. It is not a large volume. It is not shift work, it is not anything of that nature. It is completing orders for specific things. The proposed hours of operation are from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Everything is done inside the building. The assembly would be in the steel part of the building. In the back, in the front, there would be storage and an office space associated with the use. The deliveries of the component parts are scheduled to occur during the period that they will be open, so from 7:00 to 5:00, Monday through Friday. It's not like a Dollar Tree or a store where you're getting deliveries in the night. The deliveries come in when they're there to accept them. We have proposed 16 parking spaces. The minimum number that's required under the bylaw is 10, but we've thrown in a few extra because this is a tenant, it will be a tenant, and therefore when their lease is up and perhaps there's somebody new that comes in that has to go through site plan review again, they may need some more parking. And since we're laying out the parking now, it made more sense to throw in some extra spaces. But again, it's one employee, two maximum. Otherwise, we're not, we're not changing things except to install the stormwater management system and perhaps put some more plantings around the sign in the front, the existing sign. We're not proposing a new sign or anything like that. Jim, do you want to speak about this stormwater management system?
Can you move it to...
The little, yeah, that little thing down there at the bottom? Should do it.
See if I can forget this.
I just point to the remote, I don't know how to work it.
Took you track, track it.
Can you click that right now?
And how's that, here? That's easier. All right?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, this is... We've provided an erosion incentive control plans, several notes on here to, during construction, to control erosion. There's currently a row of hay bales along one of the entrances to the building. And the second entrance is over here. But just to give you a general layout, the site is sloping from the back towards the front, so all of the stormwater runoff is directed towards Holm Street. And currently, there's four leaching catch basins on the site that are capturing some of the runoff. But as I understand it, larger storms, there is some runoff that has been flowing out into Holm Street. So what we've done is to look at the site. The current owner purchased the property in 2020, and based on our review of aerial photographs, the back part of the site had been treed and there was some other vegetation around the buildings. So we went back to that timeframe to assess existing conditions for the site. So by having more vegetation on the site, there would have been less runoff. And in this current condition, again, there's no intent to pave the site at this time, but we've sized these basins. There's gonna be two new open infiltration basins that would essentially replace what is of these little catch basins. And so we'll use these existing catch basins to pipe the runoff into these larger basins now. So we've also provided for a roof drain for a portion of the building that would overflow into the infiltration system. And then the majority of the runoff is being captured in this larger basin. We've sized them to provide storage for, to fully contain a 10-year storm with no off-site runoff. And that's per the town's regulations. And then in larger storms, 100-year storm, there would be an overflow device here.
Back.
Yeah.
One more.
Very sensitive. So, yeah, this overflow spillway would allow a very small portion of the runoff to flow out into Holm Street. But in all cases, for all of the design storms, the two, the 10, 25, and 100-year storms, we've reduced the runoff rates and volumes well below existing conditions. And again, I'm going back to that 2019 state when the, when the site was mostly vegetated. So it's a very conservative design, and that's why we have the relatively large basins as compared to what had been out there before with just these few leaching catch basins. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. The parking spaces that we're providing, we have three spaces out front and then the majority of the spaces are out back, providing a dumpster. Whoops, there we go again. Can't touch it. We have a dumpster over here. So that's kind of it in a nutshell.
And I just, since we have this green up, I'll just say, so then the deliveries of the component and materials, there is a door on the side of the building towards that large catch basin. And so the deliveries would come in right through there, deliver the materials.
Where would that be again? Could you show them with the delivery doors?
Yeah.
You want to go over the photos?
Yeah. See, these are the doors on that side of the building already. So they're coming in. Can you go back to the... Can you go back? So for deliveries, which again are during the operational hours, the deliveries are coming in through here because that's where those doors are. That's the pattern.
Okay, what I'll do is I'll open up two questions from members of the board and then we'll go from there.
Okay. What size trucks will be doing the deliveries?
They're not huge 18-wheeler-sized trucks. They're regular delivery trucks.
Okay. Like the...
They're a truck.
Yeah.
Jim?
Yes, Jim.
You mentioned you weren't gonna pave. I assumed you were talking about asphalt. What are you putting down?
So currently, it's a gravel base that's up there. That's the intent, to keep it as it is.
So you will have an range of that?
Yeah. Around the basins, these basins would be longed and seeded. So we're removing gravel area to construct those basins.
Right, I would say when we were here the last time to address the complaint, I was, I asked a question about whether it would be possible to not pave because there was another applicant that was here. You guys were talking about infiltration. And so that's the reason why we're not proposing to pave the parking lot. We're gonna keep it permeable with the gravel so that there can be more infiltration in that respect.
So the larger part of the lot that's been completely treed will remain just gravel, dirt? There's no plantings or anything like that, you know, that would help with the water infiltration into the ground?
No, it's not necessary to do that. We're gonna leave it the way it is. Because as Jim said, he used as his existing conditions what it was like when it was even better. And he's designed this to make it an improvement over existing conditions. So it's, I don't wanna say overdesigned because Jim doesn't...
Conservative.
Yeah.
Conservative approach.
Because you were, we informed you with the pictures of some of the water runoff that's coming through here.
Right.
It's a lot of water.
Well, you can see they're relatively large basins. This basin is larger than the existing building that's there, just for instance.
As far as the building goes itself, is it gonna be one or in the intention for the future also? Is one single tenant is gonna occupy the whole building? Or is it gonna be subdivided into other businesses down the road?
Yeah, for this, it is one tenant that is taking the whole building. As I said, he's gonna have office and storage in the front. Office where there's, he's gonna put a desk where there's the nice windows. And then the assembly in the steel building in the back. I don't think there's any plans on subdividing the building for anybody in the future. If we get this approval and we get this tenant, then they'll have a long-term lease.
Is all the storage gonna be inside the building or will there be outside storage?
There would be some outside storage of some of the components from time to time if it doesn't fit inside the building.
How much?
I can't say for sure. But it wouldn't be, you know, it would be proximate to the building because that would be more convenient for the person who's doing the work. You're not gonna wanna store stuff 500 feet away from where you need to bring it to the building.
So I guess my concern is that, you know, the components are gonna be stored on the property as they're being used, assembled, and sold. It's not a matter of an inventory gonna be out in the, in the back of the building so down the road, we have a thousand pieces of equipment sitting out in the back and used when it's needed or when it's called for.
All right, I can look into, I can get to a better answer in terms of, in terms of that.
Brendan, any questions?
No, for me.
Yes, Tom.
Have you addressed lighting on this, sir?
We're not making any changes to the lighting. There was a complaint that was made about the lights in the back of the building, and those lights have been disconnected and it is not proposed to turn them back on. I think there is a light at this top of the exterior stairwell, but I think by code, we can't turn that light off. But the lights that were in the back of the building, as I said, have been disconnected and they're not proposed to be turned back on. So if there's a condition to that effect, that would be a problem.
Yeah, 'cause I think the last time we spoke, we talked about the line being shielded and whatnot 'cause it really lights up the neighborhood over there.
Yeah, so they just disconnected them completely. They're not being used. So if that's a, if that's a condition, then that's...
All right. Hold on one second. Any else, Tom, with that? Amy, do you have any further questions?
Not at this time.
Okay, I'll open up to the board. The questions go through the chair. You stand up and give your name and address and then the board will, will get answers for you. Your name, sir?
Phil McAllister, 231 River Street. How high is the property in the back of the building? It seems like there's not a lot of space there. Is the water runoff that fast from the back of the building?
What is the pitch from the back? You said it all pitches and flows to the, towards Holm Street. So what were you talking for?
Yeah.
Topography levels?
I believe it's around elevation 86 or so at the back and around 72 at the front. It's over a distance of about 600 feet, roughly.
What is the, not a triangle, it, behind the building there, you got those double water...
Pentagon.
Septic system that's going in the back there?
There's an existing septic system in front.
Don't touch the screen.
He's talking about this. Oh, okay. So again, this is, this is an erosion incentive control plan to be used during construction. So this is just showing where soil might be stockpiled on site during construction of these basins temporarily.
And then removed? Anybody else have any further? Yes, sir. Your name and address, please.
We call 301 Holm Street. I got a list of questions. So if you could go forward on one of the next screens. Keep going. So can we look, read the notes are right on the top of it? Can we zoom into that? Trying to do that.
Yeah. Just wanna make sure I don't lose that. That is not what I want. That is not what I want to do. Just don't know how to get to.
On the bottom, the slide.
There it is.
Look at you all high tech.
Ah, right. Look at this. Sir, I'm not even an apple guy.
Yeah, I'm a green dot guy. What do you got?
So just to start with, the notes number one says that it is not within the Mont Ponce watershed. That's, that is not accurate. I do have documentation from MassMapper that shows it is well within Mont Ponce watershed through the state's website. So that's inaccurate. I don't know.
And you say you had information that it was not the law?
Correct.
Okay, which is it?
I've got five copies for you guys. And this is the site. You can see that this is the outline of the Mont Ponce watershed, and that's the property location. Again, outline, property location. Outline, property location.
Yeah. Got it.
Do you have an extra one for them?
Jake?
Yeah, I'll grab this one. I'll grab that one. I gave him my copy.
Do you see where your location is on that?
It's right, right here.
This is a decorated version of it, just to show kind of closer, closer view of it. This is the property right here. This is the outline of the watershed.
Thank you for this.
That's the property. These right here.
Yep, got it.
This is the latest one. That is the most recent one.
Ever good date on that?
2016.
Did you map prior to that, or?
I'll have to go back and review it, but from what we have been looking at, the site was not within the Mont Ponce pond watershed, as I understand, is zoning. It's based on the town's zoning maps.
So again, surface water protection area, Zone C, the property's within that zone.
Here is it. Whole lot right here.
Yep, so that's the surface water protection. This is right from MassMapper, right through the government, you know, state's website. Show Zone C, so it is zoned in the surface water protection.
Oh, yeah, you got it.
And again, right in the corner of the property where they're going to be putting on the Legion basins, is also a high-yield water aquifer, again, located on MassMapper, which is the state's site. So right on the corner of the property where they're going to be putting on those Legion basins.
And hold on, Jake, what did you say this one was again? Oh, the aquifer.
The dark green is the high yield, and low green is the low yield.
Aquifer by yield, okay.
And then this also shows that the property is within the tributaries to Sola Lake, the Sola Lake watershed, or Sola Lake Pond, or whatever, and Mont Ponce Pond. This is all accessible right through MassMapper, but I only have four, five copies of that. And this shows the area across the street that shows all the rivers and the existing wetlands, or they call it marshlands, but if you look through the state's, I think it's 310 CMR 11, I think it is. It says that the wetland marsh is also considered wetland protection.
310 CMR what?
I think it's 310 CMR 11.
Okay. Would it be right in that area of laws?
Yeah, I think they're 11.
Like 12. Yeah, if it's different.
11 or 10.2.
Okay.
And then again, the property boundary lines are within 100 feet from the wetlands.
The boundaries, you said?
Correct. And that's the wetland's number for that is PFO 1-4 BD. So my concern with that is the notes say that it's not within the Mont Ponce, but clearly I've shown that there's indication that it is within the Mont Ponce watershed. So I think this needs to be kind of looked at a little bit more. I know they kind of got over on it last time, and they haven't fulfilled their agreement with the site plan that they supplied the last time, which I don't understand why. We're not hoping them to comply with that site plan, the lights, I mean, all the way down to pictures of my property. But the lights have been turned off, but it's not the point. The point is they weren't supposed to be put on first place. That's what I look at when the lights are on, so disconnected or not.
That's a view from your house looking at?
That's my house. I have no exterior lights. That's what my front of my house looks like. And this is what I look out to already. This was during the winter time, but those are all street signs, reflective signs that I look out my front door at. So, I mean, there's numerous concerns. There's been numerous signs that my 12-year-old daughter has been out, put my dog on the run, and she was, I pull up to jump out of a truck to take a leak and observed it. It's unacceptable. So they, they need to do something about the water runoff. They need to do something about the lighting. They need to do something about privacy. I'm not going to be sitting there looking into that yard, looking at signs. That's a change in my living condition. I understand it's their property. I'd like to actually talk about the over acre of lands that they disturbed when they took out all the trees. So Chapter 146 was in effect as of 2019 for the town. Chapter 146 also indicates that any disturbance on land over an acre, I think it's 43,560 square feet, is supposed to have a stormwater management and other plans submitted, which they did not. So I don't understand why we're even entertaining the fact that they're trying to make another site plan without coming into compliance with their original site plan and addressing the issues with the property, you know, the tree removal, the gravel, the soil removal. There's no gravel on that property. It's all recycled materials that was compacted by a steamroller, basically. So it's impervious, and me, it's impervious area. So they're going to have to come up with a lot more than what they have.
Do you care to address any of those?
Oh, I would like to address all of them. So to start with the issue with respect to the tree removal, I have been before the Conservation Commission. I appear. The date that he's citing for that bylaw is not, in fact, when that bylaw became effective. I provided an era photographs. The issue of the tree removal is not an issue, and even if it were, it would be an issue for the Conservation Commission. Town Council was present at that meeting. They do not have an issue with that. That is something that happened in the past. It should not be part of this discussion. With respect to somebody coming to the property and going to the bathroom, frankly, if we get site plan approval and we get a tenant on the property, the odds of random people coming and pulling up and urinating on it will be drastically reduced. Right now, it is vacant essentially, because we're not allowed to have any employees or anybody there. So once we get.
So who's using the property, I guess?
I don't know who, I don't know who is, is being.
I think he's referring to who's, who's using whatever uses currently.
I mean, there's signs, and we get pictures of signs on the back, so somebody's using the property.
The property is being used for storage as is approved under the original site plan. There's no employees. There's nobody there. So I don't know. He had a laundry list of complaints. We appeared. My client was not able to come and respond to any of the complaints, but a letter was issued at the board's request by the building inspector. We responded to the building inspector's letter, and the building inspector has not had an issue or a problem or cited us for anything since that point in time. So that's the first thing. The second thing is, yes, there are a lot of complaints about the stormwater runoff. What we are trying to do is solve that problem. So to the extent that, you know, there were issues in the past with the runoff, the first thing we did while we were designing this site was put the hay bales in to stop the water from running into the road. Then we spent a lot of money on an engineer to design something that will address the stormwater problem. It is going to be before the Conservation Commission. Their review engineer is reviewing it. I'm sure that he will look at whatever information has been presented. I'm sure that this gentleman will appear and provide all that information in that form as well. And they will be the ones that will make a decision as to whether or not this stormwater management system is acceptable and appropriate in order for them to issue their permit. So some of the wetlands issues, I think, are more appropriately within their box. But to the extent that you would like us to address some of the documents that he has provided, we can take them back, take a look at them, and come back to you with that information. But again, we're going to be before conservation. We paid the review engineer fee. He is going to be going through this in great detail, and will make recommendations about it. And again, the lights have been turned off, and if you want to make as a condition of an approval, that the lights either have to be removed from the building or remain permanently turned off, that is not something that we are opposed to. We would agree to something. I think that's it.
One of the, one of the first cases when I first got on was when we were trying to approve Flower and Soul. And one of the big pieces was some of the plantation around that property in order to shield some of the abutters' view from the uptick in traffic that was going to come around, and these giant arborvitae's were negotiated and all that. I think that if one of the things that may help move this along is if there can be some kind of, I'm offering an opinion or a suggestion. It's not a statement. That if some kind of, would vegetation be the right word? Some kind of planting arrangement to block some kind of, you know, instead of a fence, but some arborvitae's or something of that nature to help provide some privacy, along with, I think, the lighting, to what you've already suggested, just having them disconnected or removed? Because my big concern is always, we make all these conditions, and then people agree, they nod, and then they walk out, and then there's no or else. And then everybody comes back, and they go, well, what are you going to do about it? And we go, nothing we couldn't do about it. So I think we have to start nipping that in the butt at this stage to say, light's got to come off, light's got to be disconnected. Obviously, that's an issue. You've already suggested that, which is great. Obviously, a big concern for the abutters is what they're looking at, whether it's people relieving themselves or stuff, you know, material in the backyard. That can be fixed with some arborvitae's. That would be my suggestion, which would probably knock off a majority of that list. And then obviously, that stormwater adjustment that you guys are in here to talk about is, seems like it would make a huge difference, but that's what I would.
I would agree with that statement.
Yes, Mr. Millings?
I was going to say, would you, or your client, after you discussed with the inclines, maybe converse with the abutter and see if we can come up with a plan for blocking?
I mean, I don't.
That's something you can discuss. I'm not asking for a answer right now.
Right, no, I think, I think we could discuss. One thing that I would say is, you know, taking into consideration the fact that there is, it's not a direct abutting situation, right? Because.
Do you have the train?
Because the train tracks. So here is their, oops. Here is their property, and then this is the railroad right-of-way, which is vegetated on either side. So in reality, I mean, if you look at where the property lines are, we could, we could talk with them about it, but I'm not 100% sure exactly what.
Well, you know what? Sometimes it's just a gesture of good faith goes a long way in a small town. Right? And I think it's, I know that this has been on the agenda quite a few times, and we usually tend to have an uptick in attendance for said conversation. So if that is something where, as I look out, certain people are nodding, it might just be an easy way to make everybody happy.
And addressing the questions that came up tonight, how they may affect the lot, obviously.
That's huge.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look into this further. Mr. Jim?
Yes, sir.
So again, my main concern is how they developed a stormwater management plan without even knowing that it's in the Mont Ponce watershed, or where they're going to put the Legion areas, right above a high-yield water aquifer.
Well, looking into that, that would be great if you could.
Also, stormwater management, right off the town's website, approved October 21st, 2019.
But it's not effective. It's not effective as of the date of approval.
So it says right here, this bylaw shall apply to all land disturbing activities project that may result in a land disturbance equal to or greater than one acre. So if they're not going to use that area, they should remove all that impervious area and put it back to vegetation. They've already stated they're not going to be using that area. I mean, right now, there's a bunch of unregistered vehicles parked stuffed way out back, looks like a junkyard. So get rid of that stuff.
That's problematic in that they're only allowed one unregistered vehicle to ask behind the building.
How many of that?
At least three. I mean, if I talk about trailers and boats, which are considered motor vehicles, there's probably about a half dozen. They've been slowly getting rid of, I mean, aside of the pitches, probably a dozen unregistered vehicles, but they've been slowly getting rid of them. So on my market.
That's a concern.
You're saying that there's six now?
Yeah.
Roughly.
Yep, so anything other than numbers considered motor vehicles, so trailers, boats.
Do you have an air, like, I think you had a bird's eye view picture. Can I see that?
So I have all the way back, let me go. Away from 2019, this is 2024. These are all over here now, but they're all back now. Let me find, 2022, they bought the property, I think it's December of 2020, goes 2021. So here's April 2020, you can clearly see that's all the vegetation, and then, I mean, it's not gravel whatsoever.
And as you just pointed out, there is vegetation on the railroad side closest to your problem, but on this side?
Not on the side. Yeah, I mean, weeds grown, but nothing. They took out everything.
They took out everything.
Didn't leave any buffer zones or anything like that.
They totally cleared every set of properties.
Which they can do whatever they want with their trees, but.
Yeah, thank you. I remember when it had the trees.
Well, I certainly can't speak to what happened in that context, but I can say that the existing site plan for this property that is approved depicts the back end of the property as it is currently in existence and says it is a gravel yard. So we already have an, that was for the addition to the building, which was approved. So we're not proposing to make any changes to that area, which is an existing approved gravel yard pursuant to the site plan approval that is currently in effect. All we are proposing to do here is change the use inside the building to get a tenant in there so that someone can occupy it. And once the property is leased to a tenant, to the extent that there are other things being stored there or whatever, landlord doesn't have a right to do that. The tenant takes occupancy of the property. So once there's an approval for a tenant to be in possession of the property, to operate the use in this industrially zoned property, and the stormwater is corrected, we think it will be an overall improvement than what's currently been out there and currently been happening.
My question is, is the system, or the stormwater management system that you designed, like was mentioned, the pot that is in the watershed area, was it designed for that or was not designed for that? Because if it turns out it showed that, say, just for example, it is in the watershed area and whatnot, would it, would your whole system have to be redesigned?
The pre and post calculations wouldn't change. Some basins would still be relatively the same size. We might have to add some pretreatment systems, sediment forbays, or water quality tanks, something like that, if it, if it is in fact part of the Mont Ponce pond watershed. But these, the other, these other maps, I don't think would affect the design at all. So that's something that we need to locate to the Mont Ponce pond watershed.
That'd be great.
Yeah, appreciate it. Want to come back and tell us something?
Yes.
I have a question.
Mr. just Steven, your name is?
Rick Mary, 301 Home Street.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I have a question on, when you say pre and post, what do you mean by that? What do you mean by pre? Like before they cleared all the land and all that?
Yes.
It was all full of trees and loam and everything, and the water just sunk right in the ground, never even made it anywhere. Then they stripped over an acre of land, probably close to 50,000 square feet or more, every ounce of loam off the whole property, not just that area, but around the building, everywhere. They, they had landers there for two and a half days with a six-year load, loading all the loam out of there, well over 2,000 gallons. Stripped, not, didn't leave a bit of loam on the property. And they brought in reprocessed, they call it gravel, but it's not gravel. It's recycled asphalt, cement, brick, crap. That's all the stuff that landers makes that they can't market anywhere else. They covered the whole property with that, and they keep calling it pervious material. It is not pervious. I've been using this stuff myself. I've been using this stuff myself since they invented it 20-something years ago. It turns to iron. They compact it with a big vibratory compact. It does not... I keep on hearing this water is going to pervious material. There's no pervious material on the whole site. It just... And it's like a 3% grade from the back to the property to the front. And in a heavy rain, I've seen it hit the town's catch basin out front so hard it looked like a fountain. That's how bad the water runs off. So, you're saying that these detention basins in a heavy rain like that, I've seen more than once, we get, you know, those videos of it even from the highway surveyor, that they're going to handle all that water?
Yes.
Even, you know, and you keep talking about pervious gravel. There is no pervious gravel. So, that's just, you know, get that right out of your mind.
Is not there?
No, no, there's no gravel on the lot, believe me.
So, you spend a lot of... Just, I'm sorry, Mr. Chitt. Do you spend a lot of time on my client's property?
No, I know my client's property.
Okay.
But I can see it. I have a bird's eye view right across the tracks. I can see, I watched the whole operation from the day they set... I myself worked on the property when Jim Black originally put the first building up. Like, even these little leach basins that just sort of keep showing on these plans for the drainage, they would never run a plan. They were never there. Liddell themselves put them in without any approval, without any plans brought to the town or anything, put these leaching basins randomly in, which makes no sense to me. And all these designs should keep coming up or keep showing them as existing leaching basins. Now, how do you get away with using... So, that means anybody in town can go put leaching basin to property and then design a system, use them? I don't understand why they're even... They should just be abandoned, not even used. They were never approved. They were never... They weren't pre-existing. They put them all in after they bought the property and cleared everything.
Okay, I can speak to that because those are on the plans that we had from before we purchased the property. So, I'm not sure exactly where the...
They weren't there when they purchased the property. They put them in themselves and watched them.
But that is not in fact the case. And, you know, again, we're again talking about a situation that happened in the past. And I could refer you. I've been before the conservation commission. Town council was present. They did not cite this as an improper removal that triggered anything, the tree removal in the past. I cannot speak to what this gentleman is saying in terms of his statements about the condition of the property, but it is my understanding that it is gravel. I have been there, I have seen the gravel.
Oh, I thought you said you just saw it. You just had aerials of it. You have actually yourself been there?
I have been. I've been conflicted. I took the train. I have been there. Yeah. But, you know, again, what we are proposing is something to address the situation on the property. This is an intent to correct the drainage problem, and it has been designed conservatively as is the area we're still vegetated to accommodate all that water runoff. It is not an attempt to, you know, skirt the rules or do something less. This is a more expansive, more expensive system than somebody who's operating less conservatively might put in. And again, it'll be reviewed by the town review engineer. And if he has comments, changes, suggestions, we'll certainly make them.
Yeah, I could just add, again, going back to the original discussion on the design. So, anytime we're, as you know, designing a site, we look at existing conditions versus the proposed development. And we use the existing conditions, the runoff that is generated from the existing conditions, to compare that to the post-development conditions. And we have to size the stormwater features to handle the increase in runoff. So, we didn't look at the site as it's all gravel. And I'll use the word "gravel," Tom. Reprocessed gravel.
It's not gravel, it's reprocessed material.
It's a reprocessed material.
It doesn't, it does not, water does not penetrate, especially when you have like a 3% grade.
So, again, we've used very conservative runoff curve numbers that are input into the system. So, we treated this back portion of the lot as all being treated in its natural vegetation state. And we accounted for the conditions of the site back in around 2019 based on the aerial photographs that we reviewed. So, we were using woods. Portions of this front area were also had some vegetation around it. So, we accounted for all of that in the existing condition.
So, in 2019, the leaching area that you were talking about that was added, it was there when you were calculating or during it?
The existing leaching catch basins, we haven't accounted for that in any way, shape, or form in terms of controlling runoff for the site. We're just using them as a collection system to get the runoff into the new basins. So, we're not accounting for that as any type of storage. It's just as a collection system.
Right, so the design is the design that's shown up here. We're not relying on anything that is existing on the property.
Right, so we're just going to use those existing catch basins to get the runoff into these basins. So, we're going to be piping it into these basins. We also looked at your concern about the condition of the gravel being hard-packed gravel. So, the runoff curve numbers that we're using in the developed condition is based on that... It's a high percentage of runoff that's...
Almost.
Almost like it's paved. The number is... The runoff curve number is not that much different from if we had just used...
Because, you know, previous plans, they've shown they had a paved area out front that leached into the pervious material around, which I had an argument with that before because the engineer didn't see a problem with it. They had everything pitched right, the street all paved, and it goes into, and there's no place for it to go but on the street.
And so... Actually, on the state website, it shows impervious. The whole front of that property is impervious.
Well, even the original plan, where you have that small basin on the left side of the building, they showed a removal replaced there for... They were going to put some kind of underground drainage there before. You know, previous plan that actually went out for review was all underground. But I think this is stupid, if you ask me. Because you're losing all that area you have for... To use the property instead of putting everything underground. You know, because it was underground before. But that, you know, that plan was went out for review, and I don't really remember. I think it had a couple of conditions, not even much. And they had another area catching all the runoff from the back before it even got to the building, or most of it. Anyway, yeah, that's, you know, whatever. They want to do that to the property, knock yourself out. I just think it's, you know, a waste of property. But anyway. If that place was done right, they would have done a removal permit and mined out the whole back. Yeah, and everything pitched to the back. Have retention basin out back, that would have been the smart thing to do.
Yes, sir.
Nope.
Well, I'm going to go last.
No, no, okay.
Oh, come on.
So, I'm always trying to figure out the best solution so that both parties can be happy so that you're not on our agenda anymore. Right? Respectfully. So, one side, from what I'm hearing, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm hearing addressing stormwater runoff, lighting, and privacy. And you guys are in here to talk about the stormwater runoff for approval for occupancy. This seems like a pretty easy problem to fix if that really does solve the stormwater runoff. Right? Because if we, if this proves through engineering that that solves the big one, and then you can figure out the lighting and then negotiate with the abutters, some privacy, vegetation, stamp and go. So, just to bring it all full circle for what our next steps are that we're trying to get approved, I'm a checklist guy. So, that seems like a... Unless I'm missing something, and I'm not.
Yeah, the only thing... I certainly agree with you. The only thing with the big question mark is it's 180 degrees different. Yes, it is in the watershed, no, it isn't. You know?
And how that affects it.
Yeah, and it has to affect, I would imagine, one way or the other, so...
But I think that would be a part of...
Yes, 100%.
The number one problem, which is the stormwater runoff. So, will you get that addressed? Prove that this is what it's going to do, what it says it does. The lightings get disconnected and stay disconnected and removed, even better, just out of good faith. And then, you get some privacy negotiations. I think, hopefully, this would solve everybody's problem so that you can have the occupancy and the abutters can go back to living in the property that they originally bought.
So, what's the pleasure of the board? Will you continue this until we get some answers? I don't know if conservation is... You said had the peer review come in.
Who is that?
Yeah, who is that? It's...
The review engineer?
Pat.
Pat Friderick? Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I don't know how long it would take him to come up with a...
He's going to be pretty quick.
Yeah, determination. But he's already... Conservation has already had that in the works, so to speak.
Yeah, we did check.
Oh, good. That always... All right. Yes, sir.
Can I assume that you're going to investigate and see if all of this applies? And are we communicating with Pat?
We haven't heard from him yet, but, you know...
I assume he'll find it, but in case he doesn't, it should be brought up, because we're going to bring it up just to try to save a step here.
Sure.
I guess if I could just ask. So, would you be willing to have us come out so that we can see from your property to the property so that then we can talk about what kinds of plantings might be appropriate?
It's your call. Me? If you want, can take a look, sure.
Thanks.
Some of these fixes are pretty easy. I would suggest that you propose to take the lighting down so there's no impulse to turn it on.
It'd be nice.
I mean, I've been back before with Phil. Phil has been working on the property. He's been running this business or whatever. He sent me a picture of he put a piece of tape around the process and it said like, "You turn this light on, do a little of home," something like that. But it still kept getting turned on.
Well, a couple of clip wires will do wonders, I'm sure.
All right, what's the pleasure of the board? Will you continue this to...
Give them a lot of amount of time to do their due diligence?
Yes, you need some time. Or would you rather contact us? I wonder, would be convenient as long as...
How long do you think you... Your meeting in two weeks, right?
On the 19th.
The 19th. Do you think you can...
Yeah, I guess the question of addressing...
Where's our calendars? How many dates do you have left?
Well, I know, I was going to ask. I don't have the application in front of me to know what date that they applied.
If we need to look at all this.
I think it was recently. I should put this...
Yeah, I think we could come back on the 19th, but then if something happens and he's not quite ready, I could come back and request another...
Should we call the date of the application? You know, where...
For this site plan?
Yes. It was on the...
Six?
Six.
We need... So, 45 days, so 25... 20 days. It'll be the day after our next planning board, 45 days from August 6th.
Okay.
Do you want to put in for an extension just to cover it?
The 45 days from August 6th will be August... Oh, I'm sorry, September 20th.
Okay. So, if we come back on the 19th and we need more time, can we just sign up on the 19th?
Yeah.
Or you can ask for an extension now. It's still come back on the 19th if you have it. But at least if you ask for the extension now, you're good if it does take longer.
You know what I mean? Because like, let's just say we didn't have a quorum, and now we're not extended, or... I would just say as a safety...
Yeah, just...
Yeah, that's...
Better safety than salary.
Do you want... So, where that would be, a 30-day extension would get you to October 20th? So, 45 brings you to November 4th?
Why don't we try for October 20th?
Okay, so you want a 30-day extension?
Yes.
Okay. Do we need to vote to allow that? Or she's here, so we'll just agree to it?
Yeah, we need to vote on that.
Yeah, we can vote on that.
A motion to allow a site plan extension for PSPR-24-1 for 285 Elm Street for 30 days?
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve a 30-day extension on the application. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous, 4-0.
So, you'll need to get with the secretary and have that filled because we don't have another application of...
Another form.
Okay?
So, we can do it on Monday, right? She's not here.
Yeah, because you have until the 20th. Yeah.
And we'll continue with till the first available appointment on... What's the date?
The 19th.
The 19th.
October 19th.
No, September 19th.
September 19th, yes.
It's Thursday. Today's Thursday.
How am I doing?
You're doing all right. I have a truck, I believe. You're doing great.
All right, thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Cool.
All right, what else do you got?
Do you guys have all those? Do you guys have a copy of all these?
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, you can have... Do you want my pile just in case?
Sure. I was going to say, what was that last one that they did not... You only had...
Yeah, I gave them.
Oh, you got it?
I gave them to them.
Awesome, thank you.
Everything we have, you have.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, guys.
All right. Next on our agenda, just the minutes that we approved, we have to sign them. We just need to... First one is for...
Have a good night.
I love them. And the only one is for August 1st that we approved. We just have to sign. You got Pat?
Yeah, I got one.
Would you like a motion to be adjourned?
I think we have one.
Oh, I don't think so.
Adjourned too.
Okay. Motion to adjourn till September 19th, 2024 at 7:00 P.M.?
Second.
You have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes, aye.
Oh, he was absent.
This one. Oh, you were.